Good evening, and welcome to the special meeting and public hearing for the preliminary budget for the town of Tustin for November 1st, 2021. First of all, on the copy that I gave you, if you go to page number 12.
That's funny.
That should have $951,302 in that. And if we go down to the bottom, that 26 should be $1,777,502. Yes.
These numbers, you want to change their own statement?
Yes. Any comments from the portions I'm open? As I said, the floor is all yours.
I have a question.
I hope it's gonna be an easy one.
Well, it just, it just, you know, most of these.
Is that copy there, Kevin, probably is missing the one number?
It wasn't page 12, it was about, it was where something like, it looked like a grant, went from like two, yeah, economic assistance, it just went from 214,000 to 1500. That just seemed like, you know, I'm sorry, page 6 of these.
Page 6.
Yeah, I'm sure there's an explanation.
Economic system? Yeah, the same brand has been done in the food digester that the energy committee was working on, those two brands were done, so they, there's no line in them.
Okay. This is the big 10.
Yeah. And normally on those, what you would see, you'd see the appropriations, and then you'd see it back in the revenue side, sort of washed each other out.
Right.
You see the budget go up and down because of those things, but it's no change in it.
Okay. Everything else is incremental.
No, this, this isn't finally. With what we've got here, that the board's worked on, our 2021 tax levy with $1,288,570. This tax levy, as we've got it right now, is $1,182,902.
So it's down. But not, I mean, what's the difference?
My, my question actually was the, the final budget, you know, usually they're two percent half. Last year, we didn't get, we didn't do a two percent.
We don't have an increase this year. We're not going up.
Yeah.
Yeah. You want to be careful with that, you know, you don't want to, and that's the other thing, you'll see the unexpendable balance, we talked about with 160, that was 120, but that 40,000. Taxes last year, our tax levy limit for this year was $1.4 million.
Why?
Why we haven't used so much?
I don't know why, why you, are you getting less and less? The common protection is out.
We spent a year looking at the budget and being a little bit more budget conscious and things are fine.
It's gonna work.
No.
It will work. Because then next year, it will go two percent.
They have a formula, there, there's a whole formula that they use for it, that, based on what we use, they, they give us a rating.
But in their, their world, it's not that.
No, that's true, that's true, but what I'm thinking, if it's gonna hurt us next year, that's not, you know.
Not that, that, that about.
Because 98,000 to put in there and to roll over.
We're rolling over 40 right there. The mortgage tax that came in above the.
But that was that you're rolling over from 2021 to 22?
We're going them into the. This is just a 20, unexpendable balance, so we took in a lot more money this year because of the pandemic.
I understand. I mean, divided by our residents.
I think the people in the water district.
Will appreciate. They probably won't feel it.
I just want to understand, the tax revenues have gone down, lowered.
We're, we're not rate, the money that we are raising through taxes, was the best this year, during those last.
And that is. One of the things. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to understand. So the, the, the tax, the tax revenue has gone down.
And what, one of the reasons also is that we're also projecting more in some of our revenue, anticipated revenue, such as mortgage. Some state aid that we weren't going to get last year, that we got this, that we got this year, and now they're promising for us to get next year. A lot of the things that we've cut back on last year, anticipated revenues especially, because sales taxes and anticipated revenue, we don't get sales tax. But anticipated revenues are kind of a hard thing to base a budget, but this year, with the pandemic, we took in a lot more mortgage tax than we did last year. And this is, this doesn't include the last check that we got from mortgage tax. We budgeted $25,000. As of the first of October, we had taken in almost 75,000. We were able to use some of that money to offset this year's budget, and then also increase what we believe our mortgage tax is going to be based on what we're seeing by the credit flow and the transfers of properties. And the same thing with the stated in revenue sharing, we got more money, we only predicted 41,000 for that.
Well, when second we got that.
That's not. The building department, we projected $21,000 worth of revenue as of the first of October, which did not include September, we were at 35,000, so there's been a lot of revenue coming in. These, these are, these are numbers, all of these, and that budget that you've got is all in here and everything I've done through.
I don't think it's about.
We're not approving it.
I, I just think, I mean, I don't know how many, do you know how many households we got? I know, 98,000, but 1,500 residents, $65,000 a resident. But what I'm trying to say is it's not going to make any difference really, but on our end, there's a difference with all of a sudden, on, on the tax bills.
Could be a meal for a family that's having a harder time.
Well, also on the other side, the state might be raising taxes.
State is really well.
Yeah. Then reduce some money that is going into reserve for next year, by how much?
40,000.
40,000. We're reducing the taxes by 98,000. I just.
The only way that we would change at this point, the amount raised by tax, so if you wanted to say, I want to be closer to our, or even the last year's amount, so that there's a zero increase, then we would take the, either take the unexpendable balance and reduce that, that way, that would go back in the, or you would put something in the budget, since for the capital expense and you feel me taking care of it.
I just look at it as we're, we're reducing the amount of money that we can, that we can save.
So you, you're looking for more.
You're looking to be closer to zero as opposed to a negative, in other words, there's no increase, but you want to, you would prefer to be at zero as opposed to a negative one.
But I need to show less, you know.
Well, I think that we're putting 40,000 in reserve, right?
What we used to put?
No, that's above, instead of using the last year. So we didn't, we didn't put anything more into the reserve previous year than what was on the budget. Now you could have a capital project, you know, I, I would rather be a zero percent increase and put that money in a particular lineup, whatever it is, whether it's a parks line, a building line, and if it doesn't get used and it gets back in reserve.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
I have a question, you said 1,500 residents in towns that have children?
Yeah, 15, 15.
Does it include children?
I have no idea, that's the assessment.
So that includes children, he does that, includes children, so. So a family that has five kids is 65 bucks a person.
And that was back in 2010, I think, was the last thing.
That doesn't work because it's households, it's households.
It's residence.
Your tax goes to your household, doesn't it? Well, your tax is based on your assessment, right? It has nothing to do with.
Well, you were asking about.
So it's 632.
It is 632, what's 632?
Time, oh.
You're looking at more, more money than you serve, and I don't know that you really need to.
I'm just preparing for the future, I don't know what the future is. That was one of them, and I didn't think of not to, not to go down. I like the idea of not going up.
I can read, I can, we'll figure it around as far as redoing it in that zero and.
Or, or making it up once. Or don't do it.
Any other comment? Okay, I will close the public hearing on the floor, anybody for 2022, and open the special meeting. All meeting in order and. Okay, Ken has sent to us the version of local law number two and local law number three, which separates cannabis, we're opting out of licensing and establishing non-site consumption. I'm being licensed and established in retail cannabis dispensaries within county test. So we will read these into the record.
On the back of these two of laws, and then you.
Yes.
Back of this is the actual law.
2.1, introduction of local law number two of 2022, a local law adopted pursuant to cannabis law section 131, opting out of licensing and establishing non-site cannabis consumption establishments. Be resolved with introductory local law number two of the year 2021, entitled the law, the local law adopted pursuant to cannabis law section 131, opting out of licensing and establishing non-site cannabis consumption establishments within the town of Tustin, Sullivan County, New York. It's hereby introduced before the town board of the town of Tustin, County of Sullivan, state of New York, and be a further resolved, the copy to the force said, local law be laid upon the desk of each member of the town board, be a further resolved, the town board hold a public hearing, and the force said, local law, in town of Tustin, town hall, 210 Bridge Street, Nearestburg, New York, at 6:00 PM prevailing time on Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. Further resolved, the town third publisher clause be published, the public notice, in Sullivan County Democrat, River River quarter of such public hearing, these five days prior there to. 2.2, introduction of local law number three of 2022. Local law adopted pursuant to cannabis law section 131, opting out of licensing and establishing retail cannabis dispensaries within town of Tustin. Be resolved, then you've got free local law number three of the year 2021, in spite of the local law adopted pursuant to cannabis law section 131, opting out of licensing and establishing retail cannabis dispensary within town of Tustin, Sullivan County, New York. It's hereby introduced before the town board, town of Tustin, Sullivan County, New York. Be a further resolved, the copies of the force said, local law be laid upon the desk of each member of the town board, be further resolved, town board hold a public hearing, on the force of local law, town of Tustin, town hall, 210 Bridge Street, Nearestburg, New York, at 6:15 PM prevailing time on Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. And be further resolved, the town third publisher clause be published, the public notice, in the Sullivan County Democrat, River River quarter of such public hearing, these five days prior there to. 2.3 is not going to happen this evening.
So.
That was the one that had both of them together.
Introductory local law one.
Oh.
That you passed, so therefore, you have introductory law two, if passed, will become local law one, and you have introductory law number three, if passed, will become local law one.
Okay.
So I have, I have one and two, yes, is there a third?
No.
So it's only the.
So, no, no one said, okay. I printed it purposely, this is what I file with the state, so you have one and two. What they are, number one is actually introductory local law number two. Because you did not actually set introductory law number one, never became a local law, so number one hasn't happened yet. So two has become one, and.
Three becomes two.
You have to.
And we make a motion to have a public hearing at 6 o'clock PM on November the 9th, for the purpose of introduction of local one and the two. And also, your public hearing at 15 PM. For the purpose, rest of the local law, number three.
If we pass these this year, it's supposed to be 2021, sorry, but then it won't be law two, right? What is all those other numbers saying?
What you're missing, no, there's one piece that you're, if you look at it, it's an introduction of local law, it is, the title of this local law, part of the title is introductory local law number two. When I file it, it is becoming local law number one, 2020.
I know that, but the books that you have me reviewing, it's worked to like.
No, every year I start at the one. You're thinking of, you're thinking of resolution, is it a resolution number?
Oh, resolution.
Resolution numbers that start at one, and there's local law, you have not sent any actual.
So we have not sent any local laws until.
Correct. Jane has been reviewing all of our old.
I got it, yeah, resolution.
So by you voting, you're not even going to.
So then. I have a motion on the board for the public hearing for.
I'll second.
Any other agenda items on the board that are not on?
On today's agenda.
Yes. Reopen the public comment.
I have public comment, I can. It was my understanding that you were gonna, why do I have a public executive session concerned and then you're a member of the public? Is that my?
I'm going to, after this, I'm going to make a motion, enter executive session for purposes of discussing personnel issues regarding specific individuals.
Right, is it, I mean, my concern is that if it does concern the members of the zoning board, I would used to be a member of the zoning board, I always understood, and I've been, I've always understood that the executive sessions deal with personnel issues, that someone on highway department, you have disciplinary act, and, you know. But I never, as, as a member of the zoning board, never concerned with personnel or employees down, I was an official appointed by the board, and it seemed to me that the appropriate place to deal with, with members of the zoning or planning board, is it the reorganization? But it's in public and everyone in here. I, I just don't, it just strikes me as a little, it's just, I've never seen that done.
Wait one second, I want to give, I want to just mention something, Kevin, before I lose my track of, track of space. Members of the planning board, zoning board of the fields, grievance board, they're all town. Town offices.
Town offices, yeah.
They're, yeah, they're, even though they're appointed, you don't have to draw a salary to be a town officer.
It's just like, if you ever heard of bumping in executive, you know, executive session to me is always to defend privacy, employee. It's just seems, I, I, you know, I just remember I, at a reorganization meeting years ago, I, I had some issue with a member of the town board, he voted not to to redominant, the rest of the board did, but he had his say, and it was in front of him, you know, on the rack. It just seems, it's just my, that's my concern, this is a, you're taking it behind. I've never seen that done with zoning.
It has.
Sorry, that's my concern.
We know it, but can you send your comment?
Yes. Well, tomorrow is election day, and the whole thing is just, I think you said deserve to have an explanation from the board, I, I trust and respect your leadership, and so far, the head of the zoning board, Barron's, you know, valid, sweet code, town of Tustin, worth of.
We're not, I'm, I'm not going to sit in a public meeting and discuss a personnel issue regarding violations, that, we do have an official complaint that came in. Once the official complaint came in, we reset the clock as far as what's going on with this particular individual.
What does that mean, official?
It means that the town received a complaint about one of its town offices.
Okay, I thought we sent out the letter a week, more than a week ago. That's not an official complaint. And the, the specified what kind of a code, devalued. So that's not considered as a.
That, that's, that could be, if you were to write a letter to a town.
Including the town attorney, yeah.
And now, the reason to an executive session is we have got pending litigation. Okay, I'm not going to say which side. Okay, I'm not going to say which side, but it is a personnel issue, pending litigation. It will be held in executive session for such time as we are instructed by our attorney, so we can say who is coming before the board. Or what, if any, actions are taken by the board. But in the meantime, there will be no names of the person that has been accused of something.
Really?
No.
The whole town is in all, and it's.
It's a personnel issue.
Okay. It's not a personnel, it's, it's the town board and it's.
You want, you're, the town board is acting under the advice of attorneys. That, that's why it goes through executive session.
Okay.
I, I can tell you tonight that the only thing that probably happened in executive sessions, since we do not have an attorney present. Was that the board will be brief on where we stand at this point in time with a particular incident. With an individual that's a town officer.
Okay, well, um, I just want to express my, um, it, it is very disappointed, um, to know the town, um. Didn't do anything before the election, um, I feel he proposed home and delay. Um, I don't think that's, that's fair, um.
You do realize that under law, the board hold a special meeting with less than five days notice. However, when a board deals with a personnel issue, that person also has the right to be represented. So it's not necessarily the board that makes things take. It's just the fact that. We are constrained by our open meetings law, we're also constrained, you know? When we bring somebody in, that particular person also has a right to defend themselves, should the town have attorneys.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
So it's not, you know, to, to say, uh, you know, it's, yes, it would be nice to have whatever issue we have to be resolved in a mutual manner. But sometimes we don't have a budget.
So I, I just want to say, I do expect a law in order. And I hope if someone, um, does violate the codes of ethics, um, this person should get, you know, um. Consequences, um, otherwise everyone can do that, that just, uh. Mess up the election, that's all, you know what I'm saying?
If there is no other public comment, I would make a motion to enter an executive session to discuss the history of a particular individual.